Anyone want to speak? No, okay, then let's start.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Could you just note that Pam is participating remotely and that all votes will be roll call? And then perhaps if you could introduce yourselves and introduce Pam too.
Thank you. Pam Harding Barrett, who is participating remotely, is that little box right there in front of Jed. She's on a telephone. She's going to interrupt us when she wants to contribute to the meeting. And to be sure that her vote is cast along with everyone else's, we'll do a roll call for each vote. If that's okay, to be sure that they're recorded. Right, and our recording secretary is also listening remotely. So notes are being taken. So we're ready now to start. I just need to find my agenda here.
Can I make a comment, please?
Yes, Paul.
The minutes are not on the meetings that just came in today, but I do want to mention to Sarah that I thought they were very well done, but they're long, so you may want to consider doing just a summary of what's going on. The last one that came in was very lengthy, and I think we don't need that much detail, but she did a great job with it. Thank you. And it'll be on the agenda next week for a vote.
I rather liked the long minutes. Yeah, wait. Sarah, not everyone thought they were too long. At least two of us thought they were about the right length, so somewhere in between maybe would be good. You can maybe satisfy everyone, a very difficult goal.
Charlotte, the reason I like more lengthy ones is that three years down the road, if somebody wants to find out why we voted the way we did, they have the discussion somewhat more detailed. Otherwise, it's just a summary, and nobody can understand the antecedents of the vote.
Conversely, I think it's too much work and a waste of time. They can always watch the video and see the whole thing. It's not meant to reproduce the exact meeting, it's meant to give an overview, so I think we can spend too much time on it. It's just the other side of the coin. But if somebody really wants to do it, they can watch them for everything we say is recorded on FCTV, and they can get every word. And the minutes don't need to do that.
Well, Robert's rules require the minutes only to say who is here, what the attendance is, what the topics were, and a vote if any were taken, how people voted. It's true, they can be very minimal, but it happens I agree with Pam. I would rather be able to look at the minutes, which I can do rather quickly, rather than listen to an entire transcribing of them.
A three-hour meeting?
Right, and it's true that they both document the meeting, which is the requirement, but obviously tastes different. So Sarah, use your judgment, and we'll keep tuning in. We have several things for a public hearing tonight. One of them is the applicant is Joe Sade, and it's a continuation of a site plan review application to construct a canopy over new fueling pumps, demolish existing vacant building, and expand an existing parking lot located at 6 and 10 North Main Street, right at the end of Depot Ave, down at the beginning of town. We've received a request for a continuation and a deadline extension, and we could vote to accept that.
Right, we need a motion.
Yes.
Okay, I move that because of the applicant's request, we vote to accept their request to put this forward, to continue it to October 26th, and to extend our decision until November 30th.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, we get a roll call vote.
Bob?
Aye.
Could I say your name?
Bob Leary.
Aye, Jim Fox.
Aye, Charlotte Harris.
Aye, Pat Kerfoot.
Old dry aye.
Pam. Pam, you going to vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye, Pam Harding Barrett.
Okay, next on the agenda. The applicant is Joseph M. and Maria C. Santos, another continuation, a definitive plan application to create a four-lot subdivision located at 187 Central Ave. This has been continued, and I would like, Jim Fox is going to make a statement about this that reflects the feelings of the board.
We have spent an inordinate amount of time trying to listen to everybody and talk about this, but through the process, it's became clear that this has already been adjudicated, been to court and decided, and nothing this board can do can override what's already been done by the court. So as much as everybody's tried to influence and tried us to do the things, we can't do anything. It's already been done, and I think, I know everybody want to be heard, but I think it's been settled by the court, and it's documented and recorded, and that's it.
Right. We've also had comments from the engineer, and they require more information that was not forthcoming on a timely basis for this meeting. Jed, do you want to say anything?
Right, so the applicant provided revised plans Wednesday of last week. As is customary, the engineering division here in town reviewed them and sent back comments first thing this morning. In your packets is a revised staff report. Perhaps we could hear from the applicant if they've had an opportunity to review the engineering comments, or you can simply continue it to the next meeting. It's your purview.
Well, I don't want to cut you off abruptly, but I actually do. Is there anything you want to say that hasn't already been said? Mr. Johnson?
Chair. I'd like to say, I'd like to see if he revised the plan, especially as far as the catchment basins are and the flow onto the Johnson property, which is very contentious with us. And that's basically the war, excuse me, the waivers. Don't want to speak about anything else, just those five waivers. We've already contended that we were accepting, at least in my case, the four others, and not that because they fixed the light, they did a whole bunch of stuff, but I'd like to hear him present that again. And if he has not fixed that problem with spillage over onto the Johnson property, we'd be very unhappy and wouldn't be the end of the story. So I'd like him to know that, and he can present that?
Well, he could, but we're not going to do anything until we hear from the town engineer on this. So there's nothing further the board is going to do until the next time you come before us, when we've had time to absorb what you've sent.
So will he present whether he's modified that plan, or is it exactly the same as before?
Would you like to come forward and answer that?
Certainly would like to get it.
Good evening, Mark Dibb with Cape and Islands Engineering. I'll just do a real quick recap. When we left the last hearing, we had just received, again, the same day, engineering review four, which we resubmitted a response to on the sixth. It looked for a detail on the crosswalk, we added that. It looked for updated drainage calculations to include the new sidewalk, we added that as well. So we added a very minor amount of impervious area, which we provided new calculations for, which the drainage system that was designed was adequate for that additional impervious area. And even as documented in the new engineering letter we received, they acknowledged that the system is not only designed for Falmouth, per the Falmouth requirements, it's also, when we did our pre and post-development calculations, we also confirmed that it's designed even for a hundred-year storm, the drainage associated with the roadway project. I mean, we feel, up until receiving that set of engineering comments this morning, which they're asking for formulas that are inside a spreadsheet that we submitted on day one. You know, this is engineering, this spreadsheet has had these formulas in it. Ask for that on day one, engineering review one, not five before our hearing tonight. We feel we've responded to all the town comments and engineering comments, especially under engineering revision four, and you know, there's not really any additional data we can provide for this proposal.
If I may, Madam Chair. For the record, my name's Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Ahmet Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, also representing the applicant. Always dangerous stepping into a hearing on the third or fourth night, whatever it might be. I haven't been here for the other hearings. Bob had a personal engagement, so I'm here covering. But having reviewed much of the file this afternoon, and again, the engineering report, it sounds to me as though there aren't really many open questions. It's technical data that needs to be sorted between engineers. I think that information can be provided quite easily. I think that some of it is semantics. I think some of it is, you know, whether or not the town is, the town standards are being interpreted exactly the same way, and I believe they are, but it seems to me to be really an issue that can be sorted between the engineers. And I think that, to Mr. Johnson's point, the engineering referral, and at the last hearing, it was discussed that the runoff to the Johnson Prop does actually reduce from what exists currently. They're reducing the existing runoff to less than what it is today.
We appreciate that, and we also appreciate the changes that have been made. There have been changes made that are responsive to the concerns that have been expressed, and I know that and appreciate it. But your statement that there are technical things between engineers, quite true, and that's really what we're waiting on. Paul, did you want to comment on that?
No, not really. I think they've been addressed by the engineer. I think the engineering department has looked at it. I don't see it being an issue. I think it's being contained on the site, and I think we should move on with it.
If I may?
Yes.
There was one comment in the engineering review this morning that indicated the swale location with the sidewalk. That seems to be, and I'm no stormwater expert, but that seems to be a considerable issue, and I wonder if maybe the applicant or the applicant's engineer could speak to that in a bit more detail?
So... Well, yeah, it's up, I don't see it.
You can press Control and just use the mouse.
So the comment was along this side of the development, so the north side of the roadway. There is a swale shown in the footprint of the new sidewalk. It would require a minor edit to... The sidewalk is proposed to slope from the sidewalk through the grass to the roadway. So anything, any runoff on the sidewalk will drain towards the roadway and drain into the drainage system. That could be a condition to show that in... So basically, instead of this area being flat, it'll just be a slight slope here up, and then it'll slope back down. So any runoff that's coming from the property to the north will not go into the roadway system, and any runoff that drops on the sidewalk and the pavement will go into the roadway system. And we, again, we've documented that the roadway system will handle this runoff from the sidewalk. So that just, this detail just needs to show a 2% slope up and then a slope down. So anything that falls here will fall into the catch basin. So technically, yes, that is a revision as part of the engineering comments. I mean, that can be a condition, or we can make that revision as necessary.
So do you see any problem in making those revisions available to us by the 26th?
No, I do not.
Great.
One final comment, so we can both... I really respect the attorney, but he doesn't speak for us, and we don't have the expertise to dispute anything he says, and this is adversarial system. And, but I will say this, what did you change when you said there would be spillage?
Excuse me, Mr. Johnson.
Excuse me. What was changed?
Must be through the board.
I will absolutely do that. What was the change in your language when you mentioned spillage onto the Johnson property? Can you define that for me?
We're going to wait on that until the 26th. So I'd like a motion to continue.
Will we continue?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Just one more comment. In order to really express our concern, you may have to...
Aye.
Jim Fox, aye.
You may have to consult an attorney so that we can be on equal footing. We don't really think that this is a fair hearing. Thank you very much.
Aye.
Pam, can you mute your TV?
I can't. It sounds like there's a concert of some...
Yeah, you're getting feedback.
It's got a lag, it's disturbing.
Yeah, I'm going to do Pam Harding Barrett, aye.
So this is continued to the 26th?
Continued to the 26th.
And at that time, we will have the additional information that we need.
We'll have the additional information we'll need, and we will all have had a chance to look at the waivers and be able to discuss the waivers at our next meeting.
I would also hope that the town engineers, Mr. Dibb...
Could get together.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, because when there's this disjunctness there, it's unhelpful for us.
Right.
Because there's nothing we can do at this point.
Right.
Okay.
I have, I know you guys are tired of hearing about the easement. I know it has nothing to do with you.
We're on to a next subject.
All I want to say is, after the last meeting, Attorney Ahmet had presented a proposition. Before the proposition could be discussed, it was denied. Now, I am not, and I just want it for public record, walking across anybody's lawn for my eight-foot pathway, roadway, easement, whatever you want to call it, and I have one more thing to say. Can I ask why your volume is so low that it's hard to hear what you are saying? I'm sitting in the front row, and I know I have a hearing problem, but it's really like you're whispering, and you know, it...
I'm sorry about that. I had thought this was a microphone, but apparently it's a microphone only to go with the TV, and I don't have a strong voice, so I think I'm shouting.
You talk very soft.
Oh, well, does it sound like shouting here?
No.
I'll try to speak much more loudly, but I'm really making an effort. Thank you.
It would be nice, or if you had some earplugs for us old folks that can't hear, it would be nice.
Okay, I appreciate the information. Thank you very much.
But that is all. I just wanted it on the record that I wasn't accepting cutting across anybody's...
I understand.
And you know, I have no argument other than that.
Thank you.
Is this going to be continued, or you guys making a decision?
We have continued it till the 26th of October.
Okay. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
You do too. Maybe I should get a microphone.
You may have to get it.
It won't be today.
Castle Grayskull used to come with one, you know.
Really?
The toy that kids had.
But this is even my...
They never complained about me.
I see. Thank you, Jim, for that.
That's the truth. They used to always come in and turn me down.
Oh, okay. I am doing as best I can. Next on the agenda.
It was a joke. I was trying to be funny.
I know, it's okay. Articles for the November 2023 town meeting continued, and that town meeting will be November 16th, so it's coming up very soon. And I'm hoping that some of you have come for public comment on that, but before we do a public comment, if you don't mind, what we would like to do really, for the benefit of people who are watching at home and for the record, we've never really shown the actual new document. So we thought that we would show some of the new document tonight and just highlight some of the parts of it, so people can see how that new document will work for them if they need to use it. This is a reorganization, and we've been calling it Old Wine in a New Bottle. It's really not a change, Chapter 240, it's the same information, it's the same rules, it's the same bylaws, but they've been reorganized. And first, we're going to look at the table of contents, if you haven't seen them. Those of you who are here to comment, have you actually seen the new bylaws? You've looked at them online? They're on the town website. You put in the search, recodification, Chapter 240, and you'll go right to it, and you'll be able to look at them. But this is, Jed, is there any way to make the printing bigger?
Sure.
Rather than being the old organization that was very scattered because it had been added to over time, things weren't together. If you wanted to look up, what do I need in order to build a house in Falmouth, you would have to know to look in several different parts of that 255-page document. This, as it turns out, 155 pages, is about the same length because it's the same information, but it's reorganized. And the new table of contents is organized to be able to find things by topic and within topic by the kinds of things that you will need to know. So that there are 14 articles, going from the purpose and authority through the use regulations, the tables, and I think the tables are the thing that are going to be the most useful to a new audience. If we could go to Article 6, so that you can get a look at them, you can see that rather than being in dense paragraphs about what you're allowed to do and who you need to talk to in order to do it, this is how the tables are set up. So that there are the uses, this is residential uses, which is probably the one most often looked at by citizens here in Falmouth. And there are the different uses organized alphabetically, and within them, the different kinds of things that you can build, the standards. If there's anything that expands on that and adds a standard, it will be there. If it isn't there, there isn't one. And then over on the right, there are three different kinds of, it happens, we're looking here, agricultural, the first one that comes up. There are three different kinds of agricultural zones, and they're listed there, and you'll notice under them, there's a Y or an N to, is it allowed or not allowed? So you can see at a glance what's not allowed, because after a little bit, the Ns stand out. It's much easier to find information and know what you're allowed to do. Could we look just for a minute, not at the agricultural one, but at the residential one?
Sure.
Because I think you're probably more familiar with it. Where you'll see a long thing, that is for accessory housing, if you want to add an accessory dwelling unit, and it happens to be, have more standards to it. But here, we're coming on, it's after industrial, coming up, then there's municipal. We'll get to residential. Oh, you're going right there, there it is. First, it tells you what are the different zones within that, and there are five of them, and you can see them, and they go from single residence, double A, that's done by amount of land attached to them, down to general residence, and then each of those categories has a column, yes or no, are you allowed to do these different kinds of things in that zone? It's so much easier to use. Those of you who are here to comment in person, have you used the old bylaw? You've looked at it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it is much better. It's just so much easier to find things. Thank you. And then, let's look further down in the book at, we're going to go to, look at some of the overlay districts, and if you, when you thumb through them, you can see where are they and find them all together. So that first, there are the different kinds of districts, the overlay district, so you can see all of the different sorts of things. An overlay district is different from another district. It lays over whatever is under it, could be anything under it, and it picks up all those rules from under it, it lays over it, so it adds a new layer of rules to the rules that were already there. That's why it's called an overlay. So that the accident provincial overlay district, which actually goes right over my own house, I discovered, and that's why the helicopters are there, that it applies to that residential district or anything else that it's on. And there are several overlay districts, and you'll be able to thumb through and find them and see what, how it exists, so that the structure of the town bylaws is much more evident. It's like you can finally see the skeleton really clearly, and then see the muscles that have been put on it. So there are the overlay districts, and then at the end, there are very important things that apply to everything in it, and these are dimensional regulations, how big, how small, what sizes do you need to make setbacks, that kind of thing, and they're all together in one place, and they show you what they apply to. There are the land use permits that are applied. There are the procedural things. Almost many of the things that are in the bylaws require you to go to one board or another if you want to do something other than the simplest of buildings. You're going to have to come for a site plan review. When are you supposed to do that? Well, you look it up here, and it would be in those procedural requirements, when you need a site plan review. When do you need to go to the ZBA to get a special variance permit from them? They're all marked. So that there'll be either a PB for going to the planning board, or there'll be a Z for going to the zoning board of appeals, so that you know where you have to go in order to do the business that you're trying to do with the town. And it's all there. There are performance requirements. You come, you get a building permit, you say you're going to do certain things, we put conditions on things. Did you do it? Those are performance requirements, and they're going to be enforced, and they are here also, and they're at the back of the book, because they're the kind of thing that hit you last. So there they are, and that's the structure of the new bylaw. We think that it's much clearer, I hope that you think so too, and we wanted to just take a minute to run everyone through it.
Nice. Good, good job, Charlotte.
Okay, so, and those of us who've had a copy of it as it's been growing, we use the new one rather than the old one, because it's the same rules, but they're easier to find. There now, thank you, Jed.
I think if I may...
Want to say some more? Yeah.
Yeah, I think this sort of side-by-side comparison speaks volumes. On the right-hand side is the old bylaw, it's just sort of an ocean of text, and you know, on the left-hand side, it's much more condensed, easier to read in a table format, so that it's easy to find the information that you're looking for. So, well said, and I hope that helps. And if anyone is interested in reviewing the paper document, we have it up in the planning office, there's a copy at the library, as well as the town clerk. And at any time, if someone comes by the planning office and wants a paper copy of their own, we can print it there for you.
Excellent. Jim?
Well, just in my practice for the last 10 years, both Mashby and Bourne have had this table in place for a long time, and it's really, I don't, well, I know why. When I was chairman, I didn't want to undertake this job because it was so hard, and I was very glad that Charlotte wanted to do it, because it was really a tough, tough job. And I chose not to deal with it because our things were a mess. She's, congratulations.
I'm happy to take the credit for it, but I don't deserve it.
Well, I never brought it up because I didn't want to do it.
Well, that's your feeling. It wasn't Pat's, and it wasn't Brian Currie's. I believe it started under Brian.
It started a long time ago.
I know.
And he hired some very, very capable consultants, and Pat and I have been meeting with the building commissioner, with the ZBA people, with the planning board as a group to go over the work of the consultants, and we've been at it for four years? Five years? Probably the fifth year.
This is five, oh, yeah.
So a lot of people have worked on it. So now, thank you.
You're welcome.
Public comment, please. Oh, and I want to take notes.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair and the board, for the opportunity to speak tonight. I am aware that this is a recodification...
Give it your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Dave Peterson. I live at 236 Acapescot Road, East Falmouth. And I am aware that this is a recodification of the zoning bylaw, and in looking at the zoning bylaw, we did notice that there was some language and some things that were just sort of cleaned up and tweaked a little as part of this process. And so I'm here tonight as part of that to ask the planning board to consider a modification to the TDR portion of the zoning bylaws.
To which?
Transfer development...
Transfer development right.
Oh, okay.
Specifically, this is Section 240-14.7A. This is the eligibility portion of the bylaw. And I would expect that this issue's been discussed or considered at previous meetings, but we'd like to briefly convey our thoughts on this. I should begin by saying that we, my father first, and then my brother and I after he passed, have taken advantage of the TDRs on three different occasions. It's our understanding that there have been a total of six TDR projects in the town, so having completed half of them, we feel it sort of gives us a unique perspective on this. To start off, we say we like it. We think it's a good bylaw, and when exercise has the distinct advantage of providing the... And when exercise has the distinct advantage of providing the town and the applicant some advantages over a typical grid or cluster subdivision. And so we're proposing a very modest but impactful change that we think will make this bylaw better. Currently, the bylaw requires that in order to transfer development rights, the donor land or lots and the recipient land or lots must be in different zoning districts. We're proposing that the language be modified to allow for TDRs in a like zone. Here's why. To begin with, and probably most importantly, we feel it just makes good planning sense. At the moment, the zoning bylaw significantly limits your ability as a board to review and approve projects that would propose to transfer development rights within a like zone, such as an AG double A zone. As currently written, the bylaw allows for RA, RB, RAA, AGA, AG double A, and AGB to all be used as both a donor's own and a recipient district. And so acknowledging that that's the case, we ask, why can't a project be considered that allows for transfer of development rights within a like district? By allowing for development rights to be transferred between donor districts, it opens up more smart growth development in the town of Falmouth and takes away current limitations for the same. For example, what if a total, total project could show that development was permissible on two different sites, but that by transferring the development rights from one piece of land to the other, the project could reduce the amount of land disturbance, reduce the amount of infrastructure needed to be built, build a cluster subdivision with open space within that subdivision, and add to large tracts of existing contiguous open space? It seems to us that would be a win for everybody. In addition, this would help in meeting a few of the goals or policies of the local comprehensive plan. What we're proposing falls right in line with Policy One, which condensed a bit, is to continually analyze the zoning rules that guide development to ensure that they are flexible, fair, and innovative. And I know, Mr. Fox, you know that, you, you sat on that committee that wrote the comprehensive plan. And it also helps meet Policy Two, that acknowledges Falmouth will thrive and grow by guiding development into convenient and pleasant villages balanced with large reserves of open space. Two things that can be accomplished by using TDRs in both different and like zoning districts. And as you also know, excuse me, the committee that wrote Falmouth Comprehensive Plan also suggested that, quote, "The town aggressively explore the use of TDR rights." And it specifically mentions land to the north of Brick Hill Road. And I mention this because this is where our three projects are located and where we currently have two such projects that would be greatly improved by utilizing transfer of development rights in a like zone. We believe all the stakeholders would benefit, the applicant, the town, and the neighbors, but a tweak to the bylaws needed. If it's, if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, I'd like to just give you-
Yes, I'd appreciate having that, the understanding, the recodification project has two phases. Phase one was to literally reorganize what we already had and not make changes. So that we could go to the town meeting this November in a few weeks and be able to say, old wine, new bottle. The only change, and I'll speak to that in a minute, is in a section that didn't exist before. We don't want to make changes now. Changing the transfer of development rights has been brought up by the Coastal Resilience Project. It's going to get a lot of attention. I really welcome this. I think this is great to have it now. But it's not what we're doing now. We're not making changes now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fair enough. Would it be all right if I finished, or?
Yes, but I just wanted you to understand where we are.
And I, I, I understand that. We just, we feel like this is an important issue and, and that, you know, we're seeing that you had made a few tweaks. We felt that it would not be a waste of time for us to come or for the board to, to just listen to what we have to say.
Would be happy to listen, but the tweaks that were made were clarifying language, not changing.
Okay. Well, as you can see from the proposed text amendment in that document I provided you, we're proposing to strike certain language from the bylaw that would afford developers and property owners the ability to seek a special permit and take advantage of the TDR bylaw in developing projects within the town by seeking to transfer portion or all of the development rights from a lot or lots from one zoning district to the same zoning district. The special permit process would still require public review and any proposed plans in a rigorous review and discretionary approval by town officials. We acknowledge not all projects may have all the benefits discussed, but under current bylaws, our project would require us to build over twice as much roadway, disturb twice as much land, and not add as much as 14 acres to existing contiguous open space on what would be a total project of about 24 acres. Earlier, I mentioned we've used the TDRs on three different projects. The first was done in the late 80s. It was a subdivision known as Rolling Hills, located up behind Falmouth High School. In fact, all three of our TDR projects were used in different phases of that subdivision. But the original TDR occurred prior to the creation of the bylaw and was permitted within a like district, the AG double A district. It set aside about 20 acres of open space that remains an open space today under the jurisdiction of the Selectman and abuts Falmouth High School property. So those 20 acres can be used in the future for the benefit of the school district or the town. It was also recognized, this project, by the Cape Cod Commission as a model to follow for future development and was a precursor to the bylaws we currently have in place. And as such, we can only surmise that since the project was so successful in allowing TDRs in a like zoning district, that not including this in the bylaw was merely an oversight. It's our contention that anytime we as a town can balance the rights of the applicant and permit a smart and responsible project, we should all do what we can to accomplish this. So we've circulated the proposed change of the bylaw that gives the power back to you, the planning board, and gives you greater flexibility to consider the possible, possible benefits of utilizing TDRs to create better projects in zoning districts that can already function as both a donor and recipient district. We don't see the need to limit your review of such projects, especially considering that the town's comprehensive plan seeks to include some of the very benefits that could be realized by aggressively using TDRs. We hope you'll agree and recommend the change, if not now, Madam Chair, in the future to town meeting. I'm happy to discuss this further at any time, and thank you for the time and your consideration.
Any comments?
How many years have I asked for this to be put on the agenda, and it has never happened? And it goes back to when we wrote the, the comprehensive plan. I've asked for it, and asked for it, and asked for it, and it's always been pushed aside. Because not only for situations like this, but also for coastal resiliency. And to hear that Coastal Resiliency Committee is, is looking at this now, it, to me, it's, it's kind of urgent.
It could be that it should be addressed, because making changes to what I believe is going to elicit a lot of input, it's going to be a long process, and it could be we want to lift out of that, those things that really deserve more rapid response.
I think now that we've spent all this time on the multi-housing and business district, that this should be the next thing.
Well, and the Coastal Resiliency people are going to argue that also.
Yeah.
Right. Mr. Peterson, I'm very glad to meet you. Your, your work, I didn't realize that you're the one who had done Rolling Hills. When you look on the GIS, which you keep urging me to do, Jim, and you see the, the layer that shows the open land, the conservation land, that project really stands out tremendously.
Well, I, I would love to take the credit for that, but that was all my father, who unfortunately passed at a very young age. He was 55. But he put that project together. It was all land that was owned by Mr. Fred Lawrence from Lawrence Lynch. And it was, it was, it was quite an undertaking. It was a huge project, but I think a very successful one. He did a great job. And people are very happy up there, so it's, it's a good model, yes.
Yeah, it is a wonderful model.
But thank you. I appreciate that.
But it's interesting the way it stands out. Have you ever looked at that map?
Many times. Yes, many times.
There it is. It's the only thing that looks like that.
And I've watched probably every acre of that land with my father at one time, and yes, so we know it well. But it does stand out. It, it was a good project. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other comments? Oh, you're together. Okay. I guess that's it for comments on the recodification. I hope this is an indication that it's going to slide right through town meeting. Let's hope that it is, rather than a lack of attention until the final moment. Okay. Next on our agenda, we have, for public discussion-
Madam Chair, would you like to continue the hearing to the next meeting?
Yes, we will. We're not closing the hearing. We're going to continue it till October 26th and maybe later if we need to. So I need a motion on that, so move.
Second. Bob, Gary, aye.
Jim Fox, aye.
John Harris, aye.
Pat Kerfoot, aye.
Pam, are you with us?
Pam Harding, Barrett, aye.
Thank you.
I am.
She's got a TV leg.
Is that what that is?
We're-
We're picking up.
We're hearing her twice.
Yeah.
Do we have to change the deadline on this project? It's very close to the next meeting.
Uh, what are you pointing to? Oh, the boat storage? Uh, we might have to-
Deadline is November 7th.
Yeah, but we'll, we've got, uh, next. Well, it could be that we could, we might complete this now, or we might not. But we would have the 26th and-
Possibly the 3rd.
Finish then.
Possibly November 3rd as well.
November 3rd?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, also.
That's before November 7th. But, possibly.
Possibly. Okay, so let's-
Clearly up to the board.
Let's see how it goes. So we've finished on closing the recodification hearing for public discussion now. The applicant is the Falmouth Boat Storage LLC. Site plan review application to construct a new additional building and storage area for the construction of boats and a boatyard located at 550 East Falmouth Highway. And the deadline for making a decision on this is November 7th. So Jed, did you want to speak to this?
Certainly.
If you would.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In conversation with the applicant just this morning, they've asked to continue the hearing or continue the discussion on this topic. They weren't ready to submit revised plans for this evening. So they've asked to continue the application till October 26th, the next meeting.
Okay, could we have a motion on that?
Don't move.
Second.
To what date?
October 26th.
Bob?
Bob, Gary, aye.
Jim Fox, aye.
John Harris, aye.
Pat Kerfoot, aye.
Paul Dry, aye.
Pam Harding, Barrett, aye.
There you are. Thank you. Okay, moving on. We have a, a new site plan review. The applicant is Francis, are Frances and Donald Cross. Site plan review application to construct a detached accessory apartment at 428 Blacksmith Shop Road. This would be at the foot of the, the Peterson Development. And we have the applicants right here. Paul. Oh, I noticed first.
Notice of this public hearing was published on 9/24/21, and six of butters were notified by mail.
First of all, thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Don Cross, and I live with my wife Frances at 428 Blacksmith Shop Road. And we built our home in 1991, and we've resided there ever since. I'm going to read from our prepared statement only because we're both a little nervous, so we're just going to try to get out what we would like to say.
There's nobody here.
Well, we're here.
We are here this evening to present our proposal, our proposed site plan, and answer any questions that you may have regarding our application to construct a detached accessory unit on our property. The intent of this project is in keeping with the accessory apartment bylaw, which is created to, I quote, broaden the range of housing choice in Falmouth with particular attention to young adult citizens and to allow for aging in place for our senior citizens, promote more economic and energy-efficient use of the town's housing supply, and all of this while maintaining the appearance and character of the town's single-family neighborhoods. With that said, with that said, our plan is to create an affordable living arrangement for our daughter and her family, and at the same time, construct a home where my wife and I can age in place. Our primary objective is to use our 1.84-acre property to provide an affordable living situation for our daughter Sarah and her family. Sarah works as a nurse for Cape Cod Healthcare, and her husband Joe works for UPS. Their long-term, long-term goal is to raise their three girls in the community that they grew up in. Currently, Sarah and Joe rent a second-floor condo in the downtown area of Falmouth. While lucky to have a roof over their head, their situation is less than ideal. The condo is part of a mixed-use building located close to Cappy's Liquor. And though comfortable, it has no safe place for the kids to play at all. Along with that, their rent and their childcare costs every month are pretty exorbitant. Prior to 2020, Sarah and Joe were planning to purchase a house, however, decided to hold off a bit to save some more money. This seemed like a good plan at the time, however, along came the pandemic, which, as we all know, turned the Cape Cod real estate market on its head. Pre-pandemic, young families had somewhat of a, a chance at homeownership. Now, to be honest, there are few, if any, affordable options in Falmouth. So consequently, Sarah and Joe are now facing a decision which many young Cape families find themselves facing, either move off Cape or to another state to be able to live affordably. This is where my wife and I felt that we could intervene. The Cross family, my family, we have been in Falmouth almost a century. We are lucky to have a very close-knit family which spans four generations. Having the kids close by gives us the ability to see our kids and our grandchildren regularly, and the thought of them moving off Cape is troubling at best. So we decided, given that we have a property with the room to expand, why not try and help out our kids, which is why we are here tonight, seeking approval to proceed with our proposal. The plan is for my wife and I to move into the detached structure, and Sarah and her family will move into our primary residence. Both dwellings will be owner-occupied on a year-round basis. After much thought and consideration, we have formulated a plan that we submitted to you that we feel works for my wife and I to age in place, will work for our daughter and her family to live affordably, and it works for our neighbors' continued enjoyment of their properties while enhancing the overall character of the neighborhood. It is our sincere hope that this plan will meet with your approval. In closing, thanks again for allowing us the opportunity to present our proposal. We do hope the board will look favorably on the project and in turn, give a local young family a chance to raise their children in the place they call home. And I'd like to now turn it over to my wife, who's been working very hard on the coordination of this project, and she will answer any questions that you may have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Fran Cross, Frances Cross, and I live at 428 Blacksmith Shop Road. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding the site plan or the proposal that we have in place.
Well, I'd first like to comment on it. It's a really good-looking proposal. There, it's a good-looking building that you already have, a good-looking building that you've designed to put next to it. And it looks as if you really read the bylaw very carefully, because it matches the requirements of the bylaw. So, thank you. It's nice to see that kind of attention to detail. That's really great.
I'm a real estate appraiser, so I've, I've read the bylaws. And by the way, the new bylaw looks fantastic.
Thank you.
But I have literally clicked through all those little links and tried to address everything that is in the bylaws.
Well, it looks as if you did. I wondered, did Jed share with you the, the staff comments?
Uh, no.
Well, you will, but the, there's one little issue with it. Other members of the board might have one also, but that, that staff found, because of the configuration of your lot and the road, it would look as if one corner of the new dwelling is ever so slightly in the front yard.
Okay.
So you would have to go to the ZBA anyway, because it's a detached building.
Correct.
So you might need a little bit of a variance.
Okay.
Jim?
I actually looked at it. Oh, I see it. There it is. I drew a line across it. I got it. And I didn't see that, just a little bit of that one corner.
Right.
It's just a couple inches.
Right, right.
You should be able to deal with that. You have to go to them anyway, because it's a detached, we, you have a by right use from us if it was attached. But because it's detached, you got to go to them anyway. And I'd moved the building back six inches, and I think it'd be great. I, I, I really liked the fact that the form was filled out, you hit all the numbers, the measurements were all there, everything was perfect.
Right.
Obviously did your homework. I'm very much- I'm very much in favor of this. I didn't even catch that little corner, I thought it was okay.
Oh, I wouldn't have, Jed told me.
I, I, I took a straight edge to it, and I didn't miss it, but I did it again. It's just a little corner on that right side.
Well, it turns out, after you say, well, you could just move it back a bit, if you move it back a bit, that bumps into other arrangements with, uh, with the septic system and the lay of the land.
Correct, we were concerned about solar. We're gonna put solar panels.
The ZBA can give you.
And we'll work with it. But if ZBA can.
They can give it.
Work with us, we'll.
I would if I were them.
We hope to be able to gather through.
Well, and you'll never see it from the road. It's behind these really big, beautiful arbividi.
Yeah, it is very shit, shit, uh.
Right.
It's heavily screened.
Right, that, that's one of the ways that I get home, and I admire your property, that's gonna be great.
Thank you.
And the only other thing I'd, I'd comment is, if you specified the colors, it looks like you've designed it to match your house, but just saying what the colors were, because that's really what we try to do.
Okay.
Make it look like it's part of the house.
Yeah.
So it's not a different structure. We don't want to look at two different houses or designs on the same lot. We wanna see the relationship between the buildings, and I think.
I had actually made a point to say that tonight, that we're gonna.
Okay, well, if you do the colors.
The clapboard, same color, same shingle color on the roof. You know, everything will be cohesive.
Okay, Bob, you wanted to say?
Yeah, the, the first thing I noticed was the fact that, uh, the accessory was closer to the road, and my fears were allied by the photographs and, uh, the vegetation that's in front of it, because, uh, there is one right next door to me where you don't see the main residence. You see the accessory dwelling.
Okay.
So it's really important that that vegetation is maintained.
Right.
That when you drive by your property, you see the main house and not the.
Right.
Detached, uh, unit.
Right. We have a lot of mature roadies on our property that we can relocate.
Yeah.
That's our plan.
But, uh.
You won't see it.
But everything else, I think you did a great job, uh, with the, uh, arrows and the pictures and.
Thank you.
The, the notes on those, uh, really, really helps us out. And, uh, it's a nice-looking little building.
Yeah, I love it.
I, I think it's, uh, it's a great project, you've got plenty of land for it. And, uh, I know how you feel about having family close, because my grandkids live next door to us, so it's, uh, it's a great, it's a great thing.
It's special, yeah, it really is.
So I, I hope, uh, it sails through the ZBA for you.
Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I, uh, I support this project. I think the application is very complete with pictures and everything, and the details are there. I think it's what we're looking for in an infi- increased density, and it's a good example of what we're trying to do, so.
Right.
I applaud your efforts, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So it sounds like none of us have any changes that we want to make, and we should give it a positive.
We should. So if we could ask for a, a positive.
Yep.
For, at the next meeting, and then you'll be.
At the next meeting, we can write one up for you, yep.
Through with us and moving on.
No comments, just positively go all the way.
Yeah.
Right.
Let, let the ZBA do their thing.
And for the record, I think, um, they submitted five, uh, letters of support. I believe they're all in your packet, yeah, in addition, so.
Yeah.
Ah, great. I didn't have those in my, in my notebook.
Yeah, they're in the.
In the updated staff report.
Oh, okay. I'll read them just because I'll enjoy them. So, good project, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, well, we don't need to, because Jed's going to create a decision for our vote next time.
That's what I mean, we had to vote for.
Who, who drafted?
Site plan review.
Just drafted.
Bring it back to us on the 26th, then we'll vote then. Right, and it will have the, the standard, um.
Language.
Language.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yep, we can do that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. I appreciate it.
Thanks a million.
Okay. Um, that brings us to, uh, wow, we have whizzed through tonight. Announcements. Do we have any announcements?
No.
Nope. General correspondence.
There was one, uh, item in the back part of your packets, the Route 28.
We had, yeah, we were. Got it here somewhere. It's got a big number six on it. I know, there it is.
There you go.
Yeah, right here, okay. So we were given, uh, copy, I think, on our board, it was John who went, and John is not here in town, uh, tonight. So he went to the Route 28, um, remake. The, the DPW put on an informational meeting, I guess it was pretty well-attended, and this, uh, gives us a recap of the whole thing. Did you all have a chance to look at it?
Yeah, before it came.
Any comments?
There was quite an informational article in the Enterprise as well.
It was a great article.
Yes.
Yeah, and I looked at it pretty carefully, because I served on that Route 28 advisory for the section that went from the administration building up to Oxbow, and was very disappointed, of course, that the state didn't accept what we, what we thought, uh, was a good sort of, uh, adaptation of their requirements for complete streets. And this looks as if it's a very straightforward application of complete streets. I don't think, but it's in a very different section of the, of the road, so that they have room, I would assume, they know they own the land, the state, and they have room to do complete streets without, um, any modification. So that's exactly what they're proposing to do. I would suppose the only, um, in any way controversial part of it are the two roundabouts at either end of that stretch. Do you have any comments about roundabouts?
I don't have a comment to, we've studied r- roundabouts before, and one of the things that they've presented is, the reason why they do it is because they're safer.
Right.
I mean, and that's, that's, that's an argument that has to be heard when they present it. But I, over the years, we've seen this. My only concern was, I saw this 12 hours or 10, before the meeting. I'd had no time to prepare, I, I had other plans. I was taken back that something so important was dropped in front of us at a short notice. I did not see it until just tomorrow night, it had to be there.
Well, in defense of the DPW, we all did get invitations to go to their presentation. Well, I don't know there for a fact, I got one, and I just assumed everybody did.
I don't remember getting one, but that, I'm so busy, I could have missed it. I just, it's, it's a shock for me, I was surprised that something so important.
That it's here?
That I didn't get more than one day's notice.
Notice, right.
But I liked everything I saw, so no problem, we just would like to, I would have liked to attend, but I would have had to plan on it.
Okay.
I've always just been surprised that, uh, because there was a period where Massachusetts was getting rid of rotaries because of accidents and things like that. And in my experience with them, uh, there's a bunch of them out in Marston's Mills, and you're taking your life in your hands. I mean, people draft each other. What they do is they tailgate, and so you can sit there at a rotary while six cars go by, because no one's, uh, letting anybody else in. So I, I, I just, I mean, if, if the data shows that they're safer, then the data shows they're safer. But my experience is, uh, people kind of blast through them.
I think a rotary and a roundabout are a little bit different in scale.
Yeah.
That's probably the only difference, but I don't think they're different really in the way people approach and use them.
And it depends on what state you're coming from, too. How, because they, they approach them different, some states they yield, others, uh, you're in the rotor, you have the right of way, others you don't. Uh, so there's confusion there, and we're a tourist destination.
Well, maybe, they're very common throughout Europe.
Yeah, oh, I know.
And people barely slow down.
Yeah.
You know, you just, vroom.
Yeah.
And it, because everybody's used to them.
Yeah.
There.
Yeah.
And it could be that that safety factor diminishes with use.
I guess.
I, I don't know, but it, it, all the data show that they are.
Yeah, uh, like I said, I'm just surprised by it, because, uh.
Yeah.
You know, we, at one point, the state was trying to get rid of them. And that's why they got rid of, one of the reasons they got rid of the flyover, or put the flyover in at the born, at the Sagamo Bridge.
Right.
Was, uh, because of the rotary, because it slowed things down and, and all of that, uh, so, I don't know. But it, just, just a comment.
Yeah. Paul?
Yeah. I was unable to attend the meeting. I had two other conflicts, not counting the Red Sox Yankee game. But, so I was happy to have something here to look at. Uh, I've seen some of this before, and what's interesting is the rotaries, the, the DPW claims it's a calming influence by having a rotary. You could argue that point, but they claim it's a calming influence rather than having a traffic light. The other issue is, the big controversy on Route 28 is Section 3. And they're not dealing with it this time. So, that's the one with a really tight land use and real serious issues on how they're gonna fit in elements of complete streets in that section. But they say here they're going to study it.
Past the AD building? Is that the section you're talking about, Paul?
What section is that?
Past, past the AD building? The administration building?
Section 3.
Past the what building?
Administration building, the school administration.
Yeah, Section 3 goes from.
So it can be like that.
I think Sandwich Road to.
Oxbow.
Oxbow, yeah.
Yeah. And that's where there's really a tight right of ways.
That's the one where we had the advisory committee before the pandemic.
Right.
And.
That's where the controversy was.
Right, because people there who had already built their houses didn't understand how much land the state really owns. So they had built, they were closer to the road because they were older houses, but they also had landscaped, and there are many mature, beautiful trees, um, that will be victims to complete streets, maybe. We'll see in the end what the state actually decides, but we had hoped to avoid that, to maintain some of the aesthetic of that, of that stretch of road. But it looks here, looking through this, that they aren't doing that. The state had planned to put a, uh, a roundabout, not a rotary, a roundabout. You know where 151 hits, um, Route 128A in North Falmouth?
Mm-hmm.
There's a traffic light there now.
Yeah.
That for all winter long, there's no traffic, so you don't need the light, and people ignore it at times. Um, and they were thinking of putting a roundabout there, and the, um, neighbors were all given an opportunity to vote on it. My sister decided she would take a, uh, a poll of all of the members of our precinct, members of town meeting, and they unanimously voted for the roundabout. The selec, and we informed the selectmen, the selectmen didn't want the roundabout. And so the state just retreated, and nothing has happened. So, it, I guess it's still a strong school on each side.
We've seen that before.
Yes.
Well, Charlotte, there was a problem there, too. The, um, businesses there get deliveries, and the large trucks can't make it around, around the bug. So it would just be run over. That was one of the major.
Major, right. Well, and the fire department. So they were talking about what could they put in the middle of the roundabout that would survive being run over. Concrete, obviously, but it would.
Granite curbing.
Yeah.
There's ways to design for that.
With grass in between, there's a methodology, you can drive over it.
Oh, and you make a little dome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why create something you have to drive over?
They might come back to it.
Why not just keep the stoplights?
Yeah.
A lot of modern roundabouts have what's called a truck apron in the center.
Yeah.
And it's, it, it can be a variety of different materials, but it, it basically allows for larger vehicles who need that extra space to use it. And, uh, you know, general passenger cars would never use it because they don't need it. And so it's just an area where you can drive over if needed. But, you know, those are just different types of treatments they use for modern roundabouts.
For the end of her life, my mother had a person, um, who did the driving for her, and that person didn't like roundabouts at all, or rotaries, and she would find a route that would allow her to take no left turns and no rotaries. So it took them a while to get where they were going.
They were going circles for a while.
I think it's important just to note that this presentation was for the conceptual design.
Yeah.
So it's all before the 25%, which will have another public engagement process. So there'll be another bite at the apple, uh, in terms of, uh, public comment.
What are they gonna do about, I guess we call it Section 3, from the AD building to Oxbow?
I, I don't know.
Yeah?
I don't know.
No decision yet? Okay, so that's for correspondence. Future agenda items. We know that we're having, um, the engineering department representatives come for 53G, but that won't be till after town meeting?
Right. And at the last meeting, I believe, you also wanted coastal resiliency, and that was November as well.
Right. So those two.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else you'd like to have on the agenda?
That's tedious.
Well, yeah, do you want to put this on the agenda?
If we can have something to discuss, yes.
It's almost like, though, don't you think, Bob, that the soul of recertification has to go through first?
Yeah.
Then we have to be prepared. If it doesn't go through, that we could make the change. If it does go through.
We could make the change.
That we could make the change. So, we don't want to muddy the waters, I think, by bringing it up right now.
Well, I think we want to hear what the coastal resilience people have to say, because they're, uh, they're preparing recommendations specifically for us. Has that, has that started, that process?
No.
No?
I got one other thing.
Oh.
I'm wondering whether it's worth having an update or a summary of the project on, that Falmouth Housing Trust has, that went before the Board of Selectmen. There was a big discussion on that, what they're going to do and whatnot. I think it's probably a done deal, but it might be helpful for the board to know exactly what transpired, and whether the, uh, covenants was released, and what's moving on that. Be nice information, I don't think we could do anything about it, but it might be nice to know what the process is.
That's interesting, I sort of thought it was dead. Do you, do you know what Paul's talking about? The, um.
Little Neck Road.
Yeah, this is.
What road?
Lewis Neck.
Lewis Neck.
Lewis Neck.
Lewis Neck, sorry.
Um, Paul and I went to the, um, uh, Select Board meeting, uh, not last night, but last week.
But we can't talk about it now, because it's not on the agenda.
Oh, okay, so we can talk about it then?
So I think it should be on a future agenda.
Okay.
If, if you want to do that.
If there's anything worth.
If there's anything worth repeating.
If there's anything worth.
We can't talk about it now, because it's not on the agenda, but if there's something that the board should know about, it might be nice to finalize that, that process.
I'll find out.
Then I can throw a whole file away that I have accumulated at home.
We'll find out.
Sure, I can bring that back.
Great, thank you. And Tom gets back when?
I believe Thursday.
Well, tell him what peaceful meeting we had when he was gone.
Okay, quick.
Hey, quick.
Jim wants to say something.
Hey, Pam, are you awake?
There's a lag there.
She's not there. She fell asleep.
This is way out, but
Of course I am. What are you trying to do? Are you trying to trick me up here?
I miss you. I'm on the end here. There's nobody next to me anymore.
I would
Jeb, move over.
I would like to find out what's going on with Lantern Lane. We haven't heard anything in the longest time. People ask me all the time.
They ask me.
And I would really like to get an update to see what the selectmen are up to with that one.
Okay.
They're the ones that brought that on. They should give us an update of what's happening. They overruled our vote and decided to go another way, and now we have to deal with it. So I'd like to ask them what's going on. We had voted to go with the Cape Cod Commission and listen to a special permit application for Ameria, which, a special permit leaves it in our control, and they have to do what they want. They chose to deny the special permit, which kicks it into forty-B rule, which takes it totally out of our hands. So we ended up with a fifty-foot-tall, hundred-and-ten-foot, you know, with five-foot setbacks in a neighborhood, and we haven't heard anything about it in years, but the last I heard was that's where it ended up. Because the selectmen interceded and overrode the preliminary Cape Cod Commission board and had them go back to their board and not approve it. And then by not being approved, they kicked it into
Forty-B.
a forty-B as opposed to special permit, which is something we control. And we don't control fortyBs.
Right.
And Jim did an excellent summation of what
I had never heard that history before.
It was a bad one.
It is.
And there's been ramifications that affected me personally because of the position I took on that, so. But you never get anything done in this town unless you make some enemies, okay? If everyone loves you, you're not doing anything.
That's exactly true. But it's also true that the select board that we have now is not the select board we had then. And I wonder if they know that mechanism.
Oh, they better.
It's worth going over it just to be sure that they do.
Okay, I would expect that they
A situation were to arise again.
If they don't know, then we should definitely make sure they do, because in my book, the last place you want to be is in a forty-B as opposed to a special permit.
Right.
You can't even, you know, the state overrides everything in a forty-B. Just goes, you know, you get fifty-foot-tall buildings with five-foot setbacks.
We could have had a good-looking hotel there.
And we could have modified it and changed it and worked with the neighbors. I mean, no, they just wanted absolutely not. But the trouble with an absolute no is you bring on the worst.
You push them into another field.
So we need to be, Brian used to
There's no recovering that.
Brian used to say special permit world and forty-B world. And he, you know, I think we made a mistake as a town in stepping in, out of the special permit into forty-B.
Special permits still exist.
No, they still do, but once you deny once we, they didn't get, Cape Cod Commission just said, no, we don't want to hear it. So they skipped going for a special permit, because they needed to have the Cape Cod Commission, and they went right into forty-B.
It's the same owner.
Yes.
It is. It's the same person.
It's not on the agenda. I'd be very careful.
No, we're, okay. We're talking technicality, though. Nothing specific. We're talking a bylaw, not that one. Anyways, yes, I would like to get an update, and maybe we should make sure the selectmen understand that that's their job not to do that again.
Well, that they understand how those bylaws intersect with one another, if you're not careful. I certainly didn't understand it, so it might be news to them. Any other things for the agenda? The next meeting is October twenty-sixth. Do you all expect to be here? Paul?
Make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, Bob Leary, aye.
Jim Fox, aye.
John Harris, aye.